Good evening, everyone. We're going to go ahead and call to order the Thursday, December 12th, meeting of the Capitola City Council. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Morgan.
Here.
Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Brooks.
Here.
And Mayor Brown.
Here. Before we begin the Pledge of Allegiance, if any of the young people in the audience would like to come join us up front, we would really love some young voices of the children that are joining us today to help lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance if they are so interested in doing so.
I'm calling my kiddos out. Come on, kids. Come on.
Yes, thank you.
Yay, Iowa. Come on up, girls. I see you. Come on up. I'll call you by name, just like a teacher.
All right. No one's forced, only encouraged. All right, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Do we have any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda?
Staff has one proposed change to this evening's agenda. That would be to pull item 6E, which is the city council's schedule for next year, for further discussion later this evening.
All right. Thank you very much. Do we have any staff comments?
Just one quick announcement that I have, and then I know our police chief has an announcement. First, I just want to let the community know that Park Avenue is closed during the day for very needed tree work before this winter storms. Something that's been recommended to us urgently by our arborists. Every day it will be closed until 4 o'clock in the afternoon, and the work is expected to wrap up next week.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Good evening. First of all, this is amazing. I hope we can keep this momentum up with this attendance. So, um, right? You guys are laughing. It's true. So first of all, I just want to thank you for your service, Madam Mayor Brown and Councilmember Margot. Appreciate you guys. And then I just want to thank those of you who attended my swearing in. I just appreciate the kind words, and I got to see you because you're so tall. So just thank you for that. And then I just want to let you guys know and invite you to some exciting promotions that we have coming up next Wednesday at 10 o'clock. Captain Leo Moreno is going to be sworn in, as well as Sergeant Jackie Young. And then also, this Saturday is Uncle Nathan's Day Celebration at the Mercantile from 10 to 2, where gifts will be brought for underprivileged children. And so that'll be a fun event. The Police Department will be there. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have any additional materials?
Staff did receive additional materials for tonight's agenda. Item 5E, one email was received after publication of the agenda packet. Item 6E, the item that's going to be pulled for further discussion. There was a correction necessary to the resolution attachment. And then item 7C, one email was received. All additional materials are made available for public review prior to tonight's meeting.
Thank you. All right, we will go now to oral communications by members of the public. This is an opportunity for the public to address the city council on any item on our consent agenda or any item that is not on tonight's agenda. You will have three minutes. Please feel free to state your name if you'd like it included in the record. Welcome.
Hello. Council members and staff. My name is Nicholas Brown. I'm a longtime follower and first-time commenter. I'd like to take a moment to thank each and every one of y'all for the hard work and the dedication that you put into your roles to serve the folks of the city of Capitola. I really hope y'all had a happy Thanksgiving, and y'all are continuing to have a happy holiday season. I especially want to thank the outgoing members, Margot and Kristen. Thank you so much for your dedication and service to the city of Capitola. Margot, thank you for ushering the president and the governor through our wonderful city when you were mayor. And we're going to miss you as a council member. Also, I'd like to really thank Mayor Brown. Kristen, your leadership as mayor during the pandemic and your leadership through the recovery efforts of last year's disasters and your tireless work to get the wharf and Boat and Bait back open, and the list goes on. We're all going to miss you. Thank you very much. And your dedication to service and as a public servant just goes unmatched. So, thank you.
Thank you, love. You're not going to miss me. Hi, welcome.
Hi. My name's Goran Klapic. I play basketball a lot at J Street Park. There's another issue that I want to address, and that was one time an incident in Capitola where a bar was involved in dealing of cocaine on a grand-scale basis. I addressed this issue before. I addressed that issue to Captain Sarah Ryan when she was a captain before, but now she's a police chief. And I hope that such things will change. I'm an Army vet. I was in the Army. I've seen stuff overseas. So I want to caution you that things like that are happening sometimes, even in the city of Capitola. Thank you very much for listening.
Any further public comment? Okay, seeing none, we will go now to elections business. And we will start with item 5A. City council meeting minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. It's unusual that we do it this way. But the City Council should approve the previous meetings' minutes before the council change is over. And so tonight, for your consideration and approval, is the previous regular meeting minutes from November 21st, 2024.
Okay. I can print the minutes.
I'll second the minutes.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Before we go to a vote, do we have any public comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. Any discussion before we move on to a vote? Okay. With that, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. We will go now to presentation of certificates of appreciation to outgoing council members and outgoing council member comments. Do we start with comments, or what do we? I'm an outgoing, so I don't know how you want to do this.
Well, I think one of the things I want to say first off is thank you so much for your service, Mayor Brown, Councilmember Morgan. It's been a pleasure to work with you for all you've done for the city. Staff is deeply in debt. We're sorry to see you go, and we know you're going to be moving on to wonderful new things. So we do have a couple of things here for both of you that we wanted to present. This is for Councilmember Kaiser.
Morgan.
Morgan. A certificate of appreciation, as well as a small token of the city's appreciation.
I'm going to open up and see what I can do. Yeah?
As well as, you guessed it. Wow. So thank you so much for the wonderful work that you do. Thank you very much.
Some comments?
Thank you, Mayor Brown. First, I think I'll start with you. I was honored to run in 2020 with you when you were going for your second term. And I couldn't believe that you called me up right away. And we talked all about city stuff and how things ran and how I absolutely knew nothing about any of this, which has proven to change quite a bit over the years. And I contribute a lot of that to you. And thank you so much for sort of stewarding this council for as long as you have. And you've really done a lot for our city. You've done a lot for neighboring cities, the county and community around us. So it's just been a huge honor to work with you, and I'm so proud of you of all the things you do, all the time you put in. I remember talking to you, like, thinking, how does she do all this? It's kind of crazy. But it just goes to show your unwavering dedication. And if anybody wants to learn a little bit about service, just look at this woman next to me. It's pretty remarkable. For me, it's been a wild four years, to say the least. I'm really honored to have been able to serve the community of Capitola. It's really been kind of a tumultuous time over the last four years. I ran in 2020 at the height of COVID. Times were really rough. Things were very uncertain. But I knew I wanted to be a part of Capitola and moving forward and getting out of a time like that. So I'm really so glad that I did. My fellow council members and I here with me and those that have served prior, we've really been able to accomplish a lot of things. And I'm so proud to be a part of Capitola's history. And I wasn't going to bring it up, but Nick did. I did get to meet Biden, which was pretty cool. I've learned so much during my term on council. I'm so grateful for this opportunity. I want to thank my council mates, the city staff, Public Works, our police department, everybody that goes into making this city tick and work and be the beautiful, amazing place that we all get to call home. It's been a really humbling, nice experience to be a part of such a great team. And all of those in the community that have supported me and continue to support me in my endeavors and during this time. Well wishes to those moving forward in your service to Capitola. I look forward to the future. Thank you.
Well, I apologize. I'm not going to be as brief, but I will try to be as brief as I can. This might be the longest that I've ever spoken all in one span in my eight years on council. As my time as a Capitola City Council member and mayor comes to a close, I've been reflecting not only on the past eight years, but on all my memories and experiences in our beloved city. I feel very fortunate to have come from a long line of people who have cherished Capitola, not only for what it has become, but what it has the potential to be. I've lived here for nearly 20 years, though my family has called Capitola home for four generations, proudly serving through our police department, the Central Fire District, SoCal Elementary School District, and now the City Council. Serving our community has been the honor of a lifetime. And I'm deeply thankful to the residents of Capitola for trusting me with this responsibility. These past eight years have been transformative for our city and marked by challenges, major projects, and collective accomplishments. The past four years in particular, as mentioned, have been particularly challenging. We faced a global pandemic, felt the impacts of nationwide social unrest, faced catastrophic storms that were worse than anything our city has seen in 40 years, and made difficult decisions made more difficult by the spread of misinformation and disinformation on social media. But in the face of these challenges, we as a city showed our resilience, our strength, and our commitment to equity, inclusivity, and progress. I truly believe that no one person accomplishes anything alone. And there are so many things that we can be proud to have accomplished together. Here are a few of the things that I am most proud to have been a part of since being elected in 2016. Taking part in the campaign for funding, the groundbreaking and the grand opening of our new Capitola branch library. Campaigning for Measure F in 2018, which has since provided funding for our jetty flume and wharf repairs, all of which were completed ahead of schedule. Adding youth seats to our city's boards, committees, and commissions. Working with then-candidate Yvette Brooks in advocating for a dedicated children's fund that now supports vital programs, services, and scholarships. Supporting the Cabrillo Local Government Fellows Program and beginning the Youth Mayor for a Day program. Completing tangible improvements to our city's transportation infrastructure, including the Capitola Avenue sidewalk project, repairs to storm-damaged infrastructure on Park Avenue, Claire's Avenue improvements, new sidewalks on Kennedy and the Lower Pack Cove lots, and over 24,000 linear feet of roadway treatments. That's over six miles, nearly 24% of all of Capitola roads. Paving the way for future infrastructure improvements in the last year, the city has secured 3.3 million in federal funding to help renovate our community center and obtained commitments for more than $10 million in additional federal funding to shore up Cliff Drive. We've worked to enhance equity and inclusion in our city through the overhaul of our community grant program process and initiating a code of conduct and implicit bias training for council members, commissioners, and the staff in alignment with our commitment to fostering a more inclusive Capitola. We've worked to address our housing crisis by launching a pre-approved ADU program, enacting mobile home rent stabilization, breaking ground on two new 100% affordable housing developments, and working with our Planning Commission to develop our recently approved six-cycle housing element. We've partnered with community-based organizations to meet the needs of our most vulnerable in our community, administering a $500,000 CDBG grant to provide food and transit services to low-income families and successfully administering CARES Act relief to support local nonprofits and rental relief for small businesses. We supported our small businesses during COVID by providing 33 temporary use permits that allowed outdoor dining, retail, and personal services to continue operating safely, acted swiftly during the 2023 storms, partnering with the county and small business owners to get building inspectors in and assist businesses in reopening, and participated in the Wharf Working Group, breaking ground on wharf repairs, and joining the community as we came together to celebrate the grand reopening of the Capitola Wharf. Collaborating, compromising, and building consensus with our friends at Boat and Bait, culminating in their long-awaited and much-celebrated return to the Capitola Wharf. Beyond my official duties, it's been a joy in my tenure on council to volunteer at the Capitola Foundation car shows and golf tournaments, lead token booths at our art and wine festivals, serve as a judge at our lighted boat parade, pour wine at our sip-and-stroll events, represent our museum at local history fairs, welcome wharf tour or fronters to our bandstand, and generally be a part of all that makes Capitola special. Public service has been an incredibly fulfilling part of my life. I've loved every minute of it, connecting with residents, hearing their stories, and working together to solve challenges. Enacting meaningful policy changes like our mobile home rent stabilization, where the impact is immediate and tangible, has reinforced the importance of this work. It's moments like that that remind me why I chose this path. To our two newest council members, Councilmembers Jensen and Orbach, I'm confident that you will find immense growth and fulfillment in public service, just as I have. Be prepared for challenges, for making mistakes, and for facing tough decisions, but also for the incredible rewards that come from serving this remarkable community. Years ahead will not be without difficulty, but I trust you will approach each decision with thoughtfulness and always keep the best interests of all Capitolans at heart. On a more personal note, I want to take a moment to thank a few individuals whose guidance, support, and camaraderie have profoundly shaped my time on council. Stephanie Harland first encouraged me to run for office, served as a steady mentor, offered wisdom and guidance, and helped me find my footing in my role during my early years. Stephanie, you continue to be a true friend, and I am grateful for your support. When I first considered running for council, Sam Story offered me valuable guidance. He asked why I wanted to run, and I shared that I wanted to be the voice of the people. He wisely reminded me that the people often do not speak with one voice, and this insight has stayed with me throughout my service, often reminding me that the loudest or most influential voices do not necessarily represent the voice of the majority and that it is crucial to seek out and consider the voices we might not be hearing, ensuring that all perspectives are part of our decisions. Mike Turmane, whose example of leadership taught me how to run an effective meeting with confidence and grace, showed me the art of staying composed under pressure, rolling with the punches, and standing firm in decisions, skills that have been invaluable in my time on council. Ed Batorf, I have come to truly and deeply value your straightforward approach and pragmatic perspective. You've shown me what it means to take this... Oh, I'm sorry. You've shown me the power of unexpected partnerships and the importance of finding common ground, even in the face of differences. Margot, you have an uncanny ability to bring levity and perspective to the toughest moments. You've shown me what it means to take this work seriously without losing sight of joy and humor and humanity. That balance is a gift, and I've learned a lot of it from you. Alexander and Joe, thank you for your dedication, for stepping up to serve Capitola. I know it's only been two years, but it has been a pleasure to work alongside you both. I know the city's future is bright and in good hands with you both on council. To all our city staff, our city attorney, our police, your exceptional professionalism and boundless patience have been nothing short of remarkable. Your expertise and dedication have been a cornerstone of our collective success. You are the unsung heroes of our city's progress, and I am forever grateful to the work that you do and the support that you have provided in my time on council. Jamie, it is hard to encapsulate all that we have faced together, my friend. From navigating the pandemic to weathering the storms, both literally and metaphorically, you've been a steady presence even when the weight of it all has been immense. And while we've laughed about your uncanny ability to break bones, tear ligaments, pull muscles, or otherwise return from a weekend or vacation in some kind of cast or sling, it's a testament to your resilience. No matter the circumstances, you show up, you lead, and you support your staff and your council. And we are very fortunate as a city to have you at the helm. It's been a pleasure to work with you. Yvette, I am so grateful. Don't... I am so grateful to have been able to share this experience on council with you. You've been more than a colleague. You've been an incredible friend and a confidante, someone to brainstorm with, challenge ideas, and occasionally debate each other about the best path forward. Your presence on this council and in my life has been transformative, and I consider it a privilege to call you my friend. Finally, to my husband, Nick, who I met for the first time here in the stairway at City Hall. You are the greatest gift this city has given me. In supporting my time on council, you have endured more than I could have or should have ever asked for. You've been the most amazing partner, talking through issues with me, lifting me up when things felt impossible or simply reminding me of who I am. I am endlessly grateful, and I hope that you know that your wife is absolutely crazy about you. My calendar's about to open up, and I'm looking forward to the adventures that we will create in the coming years. To close, finally, right? I'd like to thank all the residents, colleagues, partners who embody the true spirit of Capitola. Capitola will always have my heart, and I will always be proud of what we've built together. The city has shaped who I am, and I'm not going anywhere. My commitment to lifelong public service remains unwavering, and I will continue to advocate for this incredible community I love so deeply. So until we meet again, I hope you take care of yourselves, and I hope you take care of each other. Do I leave now? Is that it? Okay.
One last action.
Oh. The... Oh, we have to certify the results. Okay. That makes sense. Okay. So we'll move on now to item 5C, results of the general municipal election.
Mayor and City Council members, tonight, for your consideration, is a resolution confirming and approving the canvas of results of the general municipal election held on November 5th. So the election was held November 5th. It was consolidated with the general municipal election and statewide general election. The purpose of the election was to elect two city council members to office and for the voters to vote on a capitalist sales tax measure, Measure Y. The candidates with the highest total of votes will be sworn in after this item, and Measure Y passed with a majority. So tonight, for your consideration, is the resolution. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? No? Okay. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. Or a motion?
I'll move the results of the general municipal election.
I'll second it.
All right. We have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. With that, we will take a moment to leave and welcome our two new council members. Thank you so much.
Okay. So let's... I'm going to carry on as the vice mayor currently. So we are going to move to item 7D, the oath of office. And our clerk will go ahead and administer the oath of office and receive comments from our newly elected council members. So come on up.
We're going to go ahead and start with Ms. Orbach. So Ms. Orbach, I'd invite you up. Thanks so much. And I'm going to have you stand right here.
I'm Melinda Orbach. Do solemnly swear and affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservations or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Come on up.
And now we'll go ahead and invite Mr. Jensen up to the stage. And Mr. Jensen will be sworn in by former council member Gail Ortiz. I got cut off there. Mr. Jensen is going to be sworn in this evening by Ms. Gail Ortiz, a former city council member, and she'll be joining us as well.
Aye, Jerry Jensen. Do solemnly swear. I will defend and support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic. I bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion. I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Thank you.
In addition to the oath of office, each of our newly elected city council members has a certificate of election officially certifying the results, which I'll go ahead and present to them now.
Okay. Congratulations again to our newest Capitola City Council members. And let's go ahead and open it up. I'm going to start with Councilmember Orbach for some comments.
Thank you, thank you. So thank you all for coming here tonight to this meeting. It's a really special moment to be here and to be able to share this with my family and friends and all of you. And it's such an honor to sit in this seat with my fellow council members. I took the leap of faith to run for office for the first time this summer, and and I'm so excited and grateful that I get the opportunity to serve my community in this capacity. Thank you to all who believed in me, supported me, and voted for me. I know there will be many challenging issues and decisions ahead, but I believe we can work together and help build a stronger Capitola. This will be a very rewarding and meaningful experience, and I can't wait to learn and grow with this council and with our staff. Thank you to all of my friends and family for your unwavering love and support. Thanks to my bestie Sue for being my treasurer and for the best partner in the world, Matt, for being my campaign manager, which I don't think he's here because he's with my son. Okay, my two and a half year old. Okay. Where is he? Oh, okay. We've spent many late nights building our platform and strategizing for this campaign. It is also our 10-year wedding anniversary tonight, so happy anniversary. Thank you. To my two daughters, Emma and Sage, thank you for encouraging mommy to run and for the brightness you bring into my life. I'm doing this for all the little girls out there, but especially for the little girls who look like me. I want to take a moment to thank Kristin and Margot for your outstanding service and leadership. You women have paved the way for others like me to serve, and I am so grateful for your support as I take on this new role. Thank you.
Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you. First of all, I want to express my deepest gratitude to my family and to my amazing wife Heather for their unwavering support throughout the challenge of this journey. Without their love and encouragement, I would not be here today. Heather, I would like to apologize for the undue personal stress you had to endure that you had to endure during this process. I would not be able to achieve my goals without you to try to serve this community, and I thank you for being my rock. I'd also like to extend my heartfelt thanks to my supporters who have dedicated their time, efforts to my campaign. Your hard work, belief in our mission, and encouragement kept me motivated and focused. I am truly grateful for each and every one of you. I would like to thank Kristin and Margot for their years of service. Melinda, I'd like to congratulate you on your election victory. Your achievements are commendable, and I look forward to working alongside of you and making our city a better place. Throughout my campaign, I emphasize the importance of putting community first. Staying true to the principle, I pledge to remain accessible to every community member. Your voices matter, and I am committed to hearing your concerns, ideas, as we shape the future of our city together. My ultimate goal is to foster unity and progress within our tiny, close-knit, two-mile community. Together, we can move forward as one, creating a brighter future for everyone. There will undoubtedly be tough decisions ahead of me, but I can assure you that I will always prioritize listening, understanding, and making informed choices. Teamwork is the foundation for success. As the saying goes, there is no I in team. It's only through collaboration we can achieve our shared goals. I'm eager to work with my fellow council members, city staff, and all of you to serve our community to the best of our ability. Once again, thank you for your unwavering support and trust. I'm optimistic. I'm also excited about a journey ahead for our city. Together, we will accomplish great things. Thank you.
Okay, so we're now going to move to item 5E, and that's our city council reorganization for 2025. This is where we'll be seeking a nomination for vice mayor and mayor. I'll go ahead and bring this. I don't think we have a staff report. It's pretty straightforward. So I'll bring this back to council for for comment and a nomination. We'll begin with vice mayor. Do we have a nomination for a vice mayor?
I'd like to nominate Councilmember Clark for vice mayor.
And I will second. So we'll take this item in two motions. So we have a first and a second for Councilmember Clark as vice mayor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This item passes unanimously. And now we'll move on to mayor. So I'll turn this over to council.
Madam Vice Mayor, I would like to nominate you as the next mayor of the City of Capitola.
I second.
We have a first and second for me. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. So this item passes as well. We're just going to take a minute here to reorganize our seats, literally. So we'll be back with you in a second. This is also your time to escape before we get into the boring stuff. Hey, for our members in the public, we're going to get back to it. My mom told me to do it. Okay, so we're going to move on to item 6. This is our consent items. As you've heard, we needed to pull item 6E, excuse me. So I'm going to turn it to council for a motion to adopt 6A, B, C, D, and F.
I move to adopt the motion.
I'll second it. Minus E.
Great. So we're going to do a roll call vote. Oh, please.
I don't want to pull this, but I want to request that item 6B, interest rate for tenants' security deposits, be brought back to council with some more information from staff at a future date.
So we would actually need to pull that item to be to be discussed at a later agenda? Is that accurate?
So I think Councilmember Peterson, maybe what you're suggesting was you're okay approving it this time, but looking ahead, you were suggesting we bring back more information and maybe some other options about how to move forward?
Yes, that's exactly right.
Okay, got it. Okay, so we have a motion and a second for item 6A, B, C, D, and F, with item 6B coming back at another time for future discussion. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Jensen.
Aye.
Councilmember Orbach?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clark?
Aye.
And Mayor Brooks?
Aye. So this item passes. We're going to now move to item 7. This is our general government, and we're going to move to item 7A.
Madam Mayor, really quickly, we still need to cover item 6E, the council meeting calendar.
Okay, I thought we were going to do that all the way at the end, but.
Oh, we can. It's up to you.
Okay, sure. I, we'll take it all the way at the end since we're already on a roll. So I'm going to move to item 7A, the fiscal year 2425 salary schedule update.
Mayor, regarding item 7A, my wife Heather is an employee and receives a salary from the city. Her salary is included in the salary schedule update and is subject of the item 7A. I will thus be recusing myself from this item, and I'll be stepping out.
Okay, thank you. And now I will turn this over to staff for presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Brooks and council. Can you hear me? Okay, so this is going to be brief. Your recommended action is here on the screen. This is an administrative follow-up to previously approved MOU's compensation plans and agreements back over the summer. So California Government Code, Section 54953, Section C3, requires an oral summary before council takes action on executive compensation. So this is that oral summary and report. As already been stated, item 7A is an amendment to the fiscal year 202425 salary schedule to include increased economic benefits for employees in the department head group, the city manager, as well as employees in the Association of Capitola Employees, the Police Officers Association, our mid-managers, our confidential employees, and our police captain bargaining units. With a quick count, 25, city positions are receiving one-time equity adjustments in differing amounts, including department heads and the city manager, who will be receiving one-time equity adjustments in the amount of 8.75%, 3.61%, and 4.3% dependent on the position. And as further explained in the staff report, that's my summary. And your recommended action is to approve, excuse me, adopt a resolution which approves the new salary schedule consistent, again, with the following agreements already approved back in June and July. The agreements of our ACE employees, our POA, mid-management, confidential employees, the captains, and the department head compensation and benefits plan and the city manager employment agreement. And I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, any questions? No? We'll turn this over to all of our visitors today. Any comments or questions about this item? Seeing none, we'll bring this back for a vote.
Move to approve the recommended action for item 7A.
We have a first?
A second then.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, this item passes without Councilmember Jensen, who had to recuse. Okay, we'll move on to item B. This is our city council representation on regional boards and city advisory bodies. Can we have Councilmember Jensen come back? This is your cue also, everyone. If this is getting boring, you can leave. Couple more items. Bye, girls. Okay, so item B, this is city council representation on the regional boards and city advisory bodies. I'll turn this over to staff.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight for your consideration, it's the regular appointment or reappointment or review of the city council appointments to both county and multi-jurisdictional boards and commissions, as well as appointment or representation on city advisory bodies. For context and background, the City of Capitola is represented on various multi-jurisdictional advisory bodies by members of the city council. These boards and committees are established by other codes or bylaws. They're not necessarily city groups, but it's important that the city has a voice, and the council attends those meetings and provides that voice. So we're going to go group by group this evening, and I will update the screen with the appointments with each each action that you guys take. So to begin, we're going to start with the Association of Monterey Bay Governments, also known as AMBAG. The current representatives for the city were former Mayor Brown and former Councilmember Morgan, and so I await your direction for new representation.
Okay, council members, I'm interested in serving on AMBAG. If anyone else would like to be my alternate, that would be great.
I'll be the, did you want, it's fine. You don't, you can take.
I really don't. I was just going to offer it if nobody else wanted it.
I was going to offer it if nobody.
No, you go ahead. You do that.
I heard Councilmember Orbach first, so hooray.
Wonderful. Moving on to the next group, it's going to be the Capitola Community Safety Foundation. The city's city council representation is currently vacant for this board. However, Councilmembers Clark and Jensen, or I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Clark and Councilmember Jensen both currently serve on the board in a personal capacity, not representative of the city, just in their personal time. So we can appoint one member of the city council to join that group.
Whichever one of us you'd like, we're planning on staying on there anyways.
I hear Councilmember Clark say he's interested, and Councilmember Jensen will continue in his other capacity. Great, thank you.
Wonderful. The next group is going to be Central Coast Community Energy Policy Board. This group is known as 3CE. The current representatives are Mayor Brooks and former Councilmember Morgan. This group is appointed by the city selection committee. So tonight, we would recommend that the city council, if they desire to, would make a nomination for the next city selection committee, which will take place on January 27th at that meeting. The mayors will forward the recommendation. This is shared with Scotts Valley. So it's, I believe it's currently our turn. I'm looking to our city manager.
It's, yeah.
But it's going to be our turn come January.
No.
No? Okay, well, it's a nomination.
So for clarification for our council members, our term is expired. There is the opportunity for us or for Capitola to still attend those meetings, and I'd still like to serve in that capacity, even though I won't be the voting member in order to bring the information back to all of you. So I'd like to put my name in so that in turn I could be the alternate representative for 3CE.
So there's not an alternate, so there's not an alternate to an alternate?
It's not an alternate to an alternate, no, no. I kind of just keep showing up, and they say, okay. Yep, okay. Thank you.
Sure. The next group will be the Community Action Board of Santa Cruz County, also known as CAB. The current representative was former Mayor Brown. We are seeking one new representative from the city council. And we, this position could be a council member, or it could be a member of the public. It doesn't need to be an elected official.
I'd be interested in that position, in addition to outgoing Mayor Brown, correct?
So this would replace former Mayor Brown? So this would replace former Mayor Brown's representative?
Yeah, I think that's fine. She's going to, she might be able to serve in another capacity.
Okay, yeah.
Great. The next group is going to be the Criminal Justice Council of Santa Cruz County. Current representatives are Vice Mayor Clark and former Mayor Brown.
I'd like to continue my role.
And I don't mind meeting the alternate.
For clarification, it's two voting members.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's not...
Okay, I would like to attend that, too.
The next group is the Local Agency Formation Commission, also known as LAFCO. The current representative is Mayor Brooks in an ex officio capacity, and this one is appointed by the city selection committee, so if the council desires, they can make a nomination for that committee.
I'd like to, I would like to move into the normal seat for LAFCO and out of the ex officio seat, if that would be okay with council?
The next group is the Monterey Bay Unified Air Pollution Control District. This is a shared seat with all cities in the county, and it is appointed by the city selection committee. We reached out to the Monterey Bay Unified Air Pollution Control District to determine which seat it's going to be rotating to for the city, and they said it would be decided at the city selection committee, so it is possible that this would be an active position. It just will be determined on January 27th at that meeting.
Councilmembers?
I have, I'll, I'll turn to you then.
Okay, I will fight for your seat then at city selection.
You want to?
No. No.
Thank you. The next group is the Santa Cruz County Conference and Visitors Council, also known as Visit Santa Cruz. This one was listed in the staff report as requiring action, but however, there is no action needed. The seat is shared with Scotts Valley and Watsonville. The current term by Scotts Valley will expire at the end of June, so there's no action required. The next group is going to be the Flood Control and Water Conservation District, also known as Zone 5. The current representatives were former Mayor Brown and Vice Mayor Clark, who are seeking two new, one voting representative, one alternate.
I'll move up to ex-Mayor Brown's position, the voting position.
And an alternate? Anyone?
I can be the alternate.
Thank you. And then the next group would be the Library Financing Authority and JPA. The current representatives were former Mayor Brown, Vice Mayor Clark.
I'm interested.
Wonderful. And did you say we needed an alternate?
I'll stay as the alternate.
The next group is Santa Cruz County Integrated Waste Management Local Task Force. The current representative to this group is our Public Works Director, and Councilmember Peterson is the alternate. Staff is proposing to switch from the Public Works Director to our Environmental Projects Manager, which still leaves space for the alternate. However, the council member can be the primary member if there's an interest from the council to become a primary member, and staff could attend in an alternate capacity if the council desires.
Councilmember Peterson, do you want to stay in the alternate position?
I'm happy to stay in the alternate position.
Does the council approve the appointment of Erica Senick, the Environmental Projects Manager? Great, wonderful. The next group would be the Santa Cruz County Regional Transportation Commission, also known as the RTC. The current representative is Councilmember Peterson, with Councilmember Clark serving as an alternate. The new representatives are out at council's discretion.
I'd like to continue my role.
And I'll continue as the alternate.
Thank you. Next group would be Santa Cruz County Sanitation District. Current representatives were former Mayor Brown and former Councilmember Morgan.
I will take the role on that.
And alternate?
I can be the alternate.
Jensen?
Oh, thank you.
Sorry.
Sorry about that.
Thank you. The next group is the Santa Cruz Metropolitan Transit District Board, formerly, or I'm sorry, commonly known as Metro. The current representation is former Mayor Brown, with Councilmember Peterson serving as alternate. This position officially terminates at the end of December, and so the representative would begin January 1st of 2025.
I would like to take that position.
I'd like to maintain the alternate seat.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then that concludes all of our regional committees, commissions, boards, et cetera. These, some of these groups do require a motion and vote. They would like us to have like a formal action taken, so I would ask that the council make a motion to approve all of the appointments listed in the previous slides.
I'll move.
Second?
I second.
We have a first and a second to approve all the nominations for the advisory bodies. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Okay, so we're going to just jump...
I'm just not quite done yet. I'm so sorry, there's more to go. In addition to the really valuable work that our city council does for regional groups, they also play an important role in our local committees for the City of Capitola. So Capitola has established multiple city advisory bodies that assist and advise in formulating policy, and appointments are made depending on the bylaws for each group adopted by resolution or our municipal code. And three of our groups do require city council representatives on them. So it's the Finance Advisory Committee, the Commission on the Environment, and the Art and Cultural Commission. The current council representatives are listed on the board. You'll notice that some of them are no longer on our city council, so we do need to make new appointments. For the Finance Advisory Committee, the bylaws state that it's the mayor and the vice mayor. If mayor or vice mayor do not want to participate, then another city council member could take that spot. For Commission on the Environment and the Art and Cultural Commission, it's up to the city council to decide who will sit on those groups.
Julia, did you want us to, since we have a first and a second for the advice via the previous ones, do we, do you want me to amend that, or?
This would be a separate motion.
So before we move to this, since we have a first and a second, I want to move to public comment. Any comment on this item before we have approval? Okay, seeing none, so we'll come back. All in favor? Say aye.
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 This item passes unanimously, and so now we'll move on to the council representation, representatives on city advisory bodies. And I'd like to be on the Finance Advisory Committee, Vice Mayor Clark.
I would like to continue on the Art and Cultural Commission, so if somebody would like to take the Finance Advisory position, I'd be fine with that.
Okay, I hear Councilmember Peterson is interested. Great, so...
I'll take the Commission on the Environment.
Wonderful. Okay, so any other comments or questions about that? So let's go to public comment. Any questions or comments from the audience? So let's bring this back for a vote. Can I have a motion to adopt the council representatives on city advisory bodies?
I'll move to adopt the positions as described.
I'll second.
We have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. This item passes. Julia, anything else?
For this item, I'm done.
Okay, great, good. We did it, you guys, that was pretty easy. So let's move, let's bring back item 6E, the 2025 city council meeting schedule, before we adjourn this meeting, and I'll just turn this back over.
Mayor, I'm so sorry, there is one word.
Did I skip one?
The Planning Commission appointments.
Oh, no. The box. This is clearly not my first meeting, but the worst one. My gosh, how embarrassing. Okay, let's go on to item 6, the Planning Commission appointments.
So for this, there is no staff report for this item because the municipal code section 2.12.020 lists that the city council will make their appointments. So at this point, I'll go ahead and turn it over to the mayor and city council members. You can each tell me your appointment, and it'll be reflected in the minutes. The appointment is for a two-year term, which will be expiring in December of 2026.
Right, and this item does not need a vote, it's just our regular appointment?
Correct.
Okay, I'll start with Councilmember Peterson.
I'd like to continue working with Paul Esti.
Councilmember Jensen?
Susan Westman.
Councilmember Orbach?
Nathan Q.
And Vice Mayor Clark.
Secretary resident Matthew Howard.
And I will appoint Courtney Christensen.
Thank you.
Okay, I can move to 6E now? All right, let's do it. So 6E, let's go back, and I'll turn this over to Chloe? Jamie?
So after the publication of the agenda, staff became aware that there was a training opportunity that a number of council members were going to be participating in for the second meeting in January. January is fortuitously a five-thursday month, so staff would propose adjusting the proposed schedule for next year to move the January 23rd meeting to January 30th. So we would be meeting the second Thursday and then the fourth Thursday that month. I'm available for questions.
Any questions? No? Audience, any questions or comments? Seeing none, let's bring this back to council for a vote. So we need the amendment to the January 20th, 23rd to the 30th.
I make the motion to adjust the schedule.
I'll second that.
Okay, so that's to adopt the calendar and with the changes to January 23rd to the 30th. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This item passes unanimously. In record time, council members, welcome. This will be the shortest meeting of your experience as council members here for the rest of this year. So we're finally, our item 8 for adjournment. Congratulations again to our councilmembers Jensen and Orbach. I'm so happy you're both here on the dais next to me. And outgoing councilmember Morgan and Mayor Brown, who left way too quickly, I had lots of words for them, so I'm going to go find them on the streets to tell them myself. Thank you, everybody, have a great night. Thank you for attending. This meeting is adjourned.